Question item is item number 10C is the City Commission Discussion on Homeless Issues.
Okay, I asked the city manager, as you all know, to put this on the agenda because there's always going to be something going on with the homeless and I would like to get some feedback on a few issues and then just some general commentary and discussion on others. Number one, as you all know, at the last First Step Shelter meeting, there was a discussion and a proposal by city staff that the First Step Shelter Board helped to fund a safe zone at the Salvation Army on LPGA. During the course of our discussion, it came clear to us that if First Step were to do that, they would run the risk of not receiving the matching funds that have been promised to us from the county. So, we ended up not accepting that proposal although it was an excellent effort on the part of staff to provide a more long-term temporary, be a temporary solution to the homeless while providing case management and services that ultimately would be utilized at the First Step Shelter. And it's a good idea, but the consideration of that brought forth a myriad of other issues and concerns that we really hadn't, in a sense, kind of thought through. So that's one issue that we discussed and that's the way that it was resolved. But I think the second issue, and I think we should, we need to weigh in on as a commission, or at least articulate some expression, is this idea that the North Street facility, which is used by HUM, they're currently considering utilizing that particular facility as a shelter, essentially. I think it would house 94 people and they will probably come before the First Step Shelter Board and ask for funding for that from First Step Shelter. I will go ahead and tell you all, my opinion on that is that that's not something that we should support for the same reason that we have to remember what First Step is and what First Step's ultimate goal is. It's to create a shelter out on 92 and that's what we as a commission have kind of established as our precedent and what we're working towards. And, once we start to go down other paths, although we recognize that things need to be done right now, we can't lose focus of First Step. First Step has to have a chance to get off the ground and do what it was intended to do without, one, diluting the resources or the energy and effort towards it. And my feeling is if we start supporting and ciphering off money here and there, it's going to lose its momentum and it will not be able to succeed based on the lack of momentum. That's one issue and that's my feeling. Now, the second thing that I believe that North Street proposal may do is that if that's not successful, they may consider asking municipalities and other folks whether they want to support the North Street Shelter. And we know as a body that our objective has been and overall, we've have felt over the years, that we believe that a shelter, it will be best where you take the people out of the environment that they are, that they're in, and this is not the right environment. But, this body may choose to do something different and we can, you know, we'll open ourselves up to a dialogue for that if you guys want to talk about it here, or if you want to formulate an official position so that we don't have to do it later, or you rather wait until that comes up. But I'm open to discussion and that's why I brought it to you.
You know, there are certain entitlements that that North Street Shelter have and I'm not, you know, I'm not horribly comfortable with, you know, where that could go without them even coming to us. You know, I think that it is an interesting thing they put forward. HUM does an amazing job in our community, but when you put these things in urban areas, particularly when there's nearby residential, you know, they just don't mix. And I'm still 100% confident that the strategy that we have for First Step and the location, the partners that have been engaged in that, you know, is the right, the right way for us to try and start working on this problem, you know, and, you know, we say it all the time, but I mean, this has been going on since people came back from World War II. You know, I mean, this isn't a new phenomenon, it's nationwide, you know, it literally, you know, it isn't, it's not a solvable problem. I mean, literally is not. You know, if somebody chooses to be homeless, they have the right to be homeless. They have the right to panhandle in public areas, I think only where pedestrians are allowed, Bob and I will argue about that later, but, you know, there are rights that people have and the reality is, we're not going to, we're not going to get everybody. There's a guy that works in town and makes a significant amount of money, whose mom is homeless, and he set her up with a house, a car, a driver, a bank account, you know, everything that she would need. Utilities were paid and everything, she was there for like three, three or four days and she left and said, this isn't for me, I'm more comfortable on the street. And, you're just going to run into those people. What I like about the First Step Shelter is that it catches those people that don't qualify for federal funding because they haven't been homeless for, is it a year, I think? You know, the chronic homeless definition. So you have to be homeless for a year and you have to have, you know, some sort of addiction or a disability of some kind, you know, the guy who's the easiest to help, or girl, is that person who just became homeless in the last, you know, 30, 60 days. And I think First Step is going to be, if you look at it this, like longitudinally, if you can prevent those people from becoming chronic homeless, then you will eventually come close to eradicating homelessness in your community. It might take 20 years, it might take 30 years, but it is a solution that actually will pay dividends in the end because once the federal dollars kick in and that person, you know, has the challenges that they do, they're almost impossible to help in many, many cases. So, I'm completely confident, I did not know the piece about the Salvation Army opportunity was something that might jeopardize matching funds, but, you know, I worried about hearing upon, hearing of it, about the fact that it might be a distraction or something that would dilute, you know, the opportunities that First Step will, will bring to the homeless population in Volusia County. So I agree with everything that you've said and, you know, I think that we still have a lot of work to do, but I wouldn't, I'm not in favor of, you know, going off course at all from where we've been headed for the last, you know, number of years.
Thank you. All right, we have any other comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with your sentiment and Commissioner Gillan's sentiment as well. I was concerned about anything that would detract momentum or perceived momentum from First Step, when a lot of the perception is that we're not even moving fast enough on First Step. I know we've had some obstacles and some other things like that. When I say "we," I mean collectively, the community. Certainly, there's no blame being assigned there. So, you know, that was a concern of mine and I'm glad to hear that there, that, you know, other commissioners and you seem to share the perspective of, let's deliver on First Step where it is and then, you know, not detract from that. You know, Commissioner Gillan mentioned the concept of matching funds. Also, a lot of money that was raised was raised with a specific intention. And, you know, I think we should honor that intention and I would not want to invest money in something that is away from that First Step Shelter. I mean, I don't want to do anything to jeopardize or compromise that and before, you know, before I sat here, I watched us get very close, the body get very close to a solution only to have it kind of fall apart at the 11th hour, so, you know, I'm still holding my breath that this, you know, until it's fully operational, you know, I'll still be concerned. So, I would say that nothing should distract from First Step's primary and really only purpose right now, which is getting that facility built out on Red John Road. So, that's my thought. As far as, you know, the discussion of the safe zone and all that, that's laudable to try to move it. If we could, if we had unlimited resources and time, that'd be great. If that, if that's something that the commission wants to do as a separate budget item, you know, if we say, okay, it's worth it to spend X dollars for a stopgap measure, but we're not going to put a permanent, we're not going to put anything there that we can relocate or reuse, you know, if that's a decision that this body wants to make, I'm fine with that. I don't oppose spending money on that, but I think it should be separate and distinct from First Step. It's confusing for me, even like how do we, how do I talk to you, are you the mayor? Or are you the First Step Shelter? How does that, how does that work sometimes? It's confusing for me, it's probably, I don't know if it's confusing for you, but I don't want to confuse people when it comes to money, goal, and objectives because I think we owe it to our constituents to deliver this project that you all have worked on very hard for years before I came along and will, hopefully, we won't have to work on it much more past this year as far as getting the thing built. So, you know, that's, that's kind of my policy statement and, you know, that's where I would be voting and my thoughts would be unless I was presented with something overwhelmingly different. But, you know, the money we have earmarked, I think should stay earmarked if we want to allocate additional funds, you know, and that's the consensus, then I'm fine with that. Doesn't North Street have a restriction that they have to operate in a certain capacity? And if they don't do that, does the property lose its ability to operate as? No? Okay. I thought there might be some concern. Okay.
I'm not aware of any, but I'd be honest, I haven't looked at their special use permit in quite some time, but I'll be glad to look at that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we should consider each of those things separate and apart completely from the First Step Shelter and not mix and match any funds, resources, energy unless we have a surplus or that's our goal. And then, you know, the panhandling, you know, that's a difficult legal issue to address, so, you know.
All of that is on my list. You, he jumped ahead, but I want to hear if anybody else has anything else, and I appreciate that.
I think you're just looking for our affirmation to stay the course and I think you're on the right track, so.
He's right, you're right, I do want to hear from you all what you feel because when I go to First Step, my first priority is to recognize what we as a body have stated that we want and my goal is to make that happen. Now, when First Step has a discussion, then my goal is to make sure that I'm protecting our interests and that I'm representing the views that we have. So that's why it's good for us, for me to hear from you all from time to time. I think though, the other thing I wanted to talk about and he got into it a little bit was, do we want to have a safe zone? Because we need to determine, is that something that we want, but it has come to light that that needs to be done if it's determined, as he says, separate and apart from First Step and First Step needs to have his own life, his own energy, and not be responsible for a safe zone in any way. But if we as a city decide that, then it's something that, because we've heard a lot recently from the situation out on Bellevue, I know we all heard from that and we all heard both sides pulling at us about that. And we recognize that, you know, there's no perfect way to address this, as Commissioner Gillan stated. And staff has, is hearing from everyone and we're all hearing from everyone, but we as a body need to consider, is this a direction that we want to tell staff that we want to go in, separate and apart from First Step, because I think we've all agreed that those two should not be commingled. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just let me bring that kind of into focus because the safe zone is a city issue and truly, it has to do with our ability to use law enforcement for the various activities that would be occurring in our city. And if we don't have a safe zone that's a part of the Pottinger settlement, then we, it limits our ability to do other things with the homeless on the streets. So it's important that we have it and really it's important that every city have it if they're going to address those issues in their own city. It's not, we should not be receiving the homeless from other cities in our safe zone and that's, and that's part of what we have to guard against. What happened recently, we had a number of factors. We had weather, we had issues with the public coming to the safe zone and providing, really with the best of intentions, food and other things to these folks, but that's not a shelter site. That's not a site set up for people to camp, it's not a site set up to receive services. It is merely a safe zone, does have bathrooms, it does have water, but it's intended to be a safe zone so they can sleep without fear for their life at that point. It's not intended to be anything more than that. It's not intended to be a place where they get fed, it's not intended to be a place where they, they have tents that they come to every day or they pull the car in and camp in their cars. That's not the intent. The intent is for it to be a safe place for them to go to when they may be in the public areas of our city and may be in violation of any of the rules that we have. So that's, there's a real distinct difference between shelter and a safe zone.
In the original intent, the original kind of rule that we set up, and Jim and I had a lot of conversations about this because that's, you know, nearest to the residents that I represent, you know, it was supposed to be 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, it was supposed to be, you know, no tents, you know, we relaxed that a little bit when the weather got bad, you know, so the tents could be up at night, but somehow, we got away from that and you saw what happened in just a couple of weeks. I mean, it was a free-for-all out there. And, you know, I can't even tell you how many complaints I got from people. You know, publics used to have free coffee out front, they had to get rid of it because of the safe zone and those people migrating down there to panhandle in the parking lot. You know, I mean, there are always these unintended consequences and I know we're trying to be humane and do the right thing, but, you know, we need to be cautious of the fact that, you know, we represent more than homeless people in the city and we've got to find the right balance and the expansion of what we did out there, as well-intended as it was, was actually pretty negative for that corridor.
Just to give you an idea, it wasn't only homeless people camping there. There was a group that were in that area, taking advantage of the opportunity that they were going to get fed there, it didn't cost them anything, they may have $500 in their pocket, but they were, they were masquerading in that, in that area. And that's very similar to what happened over here.
That's right.
And we found that it's not only homeless and the general public doesn't recognize that whenever they see, see these people, they don't, they don't see the real danger because it is a very dangerous environment without it being controlled and that's when we said, okay, enough's enough and the chief went in and cleaned it out.
But I think a part of this is we have to say, well, if we want to be Pottinger compliant, what does that mean? What does that mean for us to be Pottinger compliant so that the police can enforce our rules? What does it mean? And what are we going to do?
Craig Capri, Chief of Police?
Yes.
All we have to have is a piece of land and bathroom facilities to be Pottinger compliant. If you look at the safe zone now, since we cleaned it up, we did more than just clean it up, we went in there a couple of days and interviewed people. Come to find out, people had places to go, people, now, if you look at it now, it's not even being used. I think we had one person in there. So, the word got out, it's not a campground, it's not a party ground. So, if we find somebody that needs to go somewhere, we'll take them there, but we're not finding that right now. People actually found places to go, people had, just needed a little push in the right directions, people needed some help financially to get, you know, a head start on some things and we actually interviewed everybody and inventoried everything and at the end of the day, you might have had really truly 25, 30% of that population that was truly homeless. Other people were coming there, setting up tents and camping and telling me, why should I leave? People bring me food all day long, this is great. We could sit out here, people bringing food all day long. There was tents just full of food stacked to the, and then they would take the money they get and they'd go out drinking and then there'd be fights at night and people pulling knives out and whatnot. And, we tried to be fair and when it got cold, set the tents up at night, take them completely down during the day, and we had a pretty good cold spell here and then they just were like, you know, we're not going to listen to you anymore. So that's when we had to do something, went in there and said, look, it's over, it's done. And, we got a lot of great compliance and people even telling us that this place needed to go, homeless people coming up telling. And we relocated several people that now are no longer homeless. They got hotels, they had jobs, some people got, just needed a tank of gas to get to St. Augustine. If you start interviewing people and talking to them, you find out that, you know, Daytona Beach is not a campground or a dumping ground. You know, there's a lot of other cities around here, Holly Hill, Orman, Port Orange, let them pick up and start doing some heavy lifting and that's, that's what we told them, you know, it's, you know, it's time to move on, so. But, it's the truth.
I've got to work with those.
I know, but, it's the truth.
Well said.
The term is heavy lifting there.
Yes.
But I can tell you that it's cleaned up now and it looks good and anybody that needs help is getting help, whether it be a bus ticket, money for gas, or just some talking to it and it worked out.
Okay, let me ask the attorney, do you feel that we're compliant based on what we're doing?
In terms of Pottinger?
Yes.
Yeah, so Pottinger is a very limited holding. It only requires that you provide an alternative to arrest for certain types of offenses that involve life-sustaining activity like sleeping in the park. The requirements of Pottinger are really very minimal. You simply have to provide them an alternative place to go. There doesn't have to be any specific type of amenities or services provided. We do have liability for the safe zone as any other landowner would. If there's a dangerous condition, we have a duty to make sure that people are made safe from that condition either by warning or correcting, but in terms of Pottinger, there's no specific requirement for any sort of amenity.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have, I have a thought and this is a guy who can't put together an Ikea cabinet, so bear that in mind as I say this, but if we're, if, you know, I'm not sure that the safe zone, I'm not sure that if we have the facility available to us that we're planning on building, that we would not be Pottinger compliant. I think that completing that facility would probably mean that our city had an alternative place to take people. That, but I leave that to the city attorney to decide. If we want to still have a safe zone, why would we not think about relocating the safe zone out to be near where the shelter is going to be built? So that we can start working out things like, are there transportation issues, are there bus issues? You know, there's already a lot of police presence that way because the jail is that way. You know, if we're going to have, if we're going to move the safe zone, why not move it someplace where if we put in facilities or we have to run water pipes, we're already doing that kind of work? I don't know that, that's, to me, that's something that I would at least want to talk about or consider if we're going to have, you know, if we're going to have both the shelter and the safe zone, why would they not be near each other on the 600 something acres we have out there? If we're, are we going to discontinue having a safe zone once the First Step Shelter is up and running? If we're not going to do that, then why not put them near each other to benefit from the common resources and services that are going to be there? To me, that makes a lot of sense. I don't know that it would make sense to move the safe zone for a short period of time and then cease operating it if we're going to have the First Step Shelter as an alternative. But, you know, I think the city, I think each city should have their own safe zone concept. You know, I, different cities are going to have different tolerances for risk or different ideas, but I mean, why, why would we not at least discuss or consider if we are going to move the safe zone, whether there's land that we already own, that we're already clearing and running water lines to that we could use, rather than, you know.
I have mentioned it before also that I think that would be a good place for the safe zone, provided we can keep the people safe from all the machinery and everything. But, they would be getting used to being over there. I do not believe a place here in the city would be really giving them the best chance to get out of homelessness because a percentage of them are either mentally or addicts and in town is just too many temptations for them, we are not doing them a favor at all. I don't know about that land, whether there should be a corner somewhere. I heard that it's pretty lowland and we would have to build it up, but I could see that more than trying to find another corner of the city to have a safe zone, starting out there. And if we can even bring some trailers out to do some case management, you know, before the First Step Shelter opens, that might be an idea too. But I think out there would be the best place.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments?
Well, I do want to ask a question that Commissioner Delgado asked, will we still maintain a safe zone even after we have our First Step Shelter?
My opinion is that you will still need a safe zone because a safe zone is just that, it's for, it's for people who may not want to go to a shelter, but they have a zone that they can go to that they're able to basically relieve themselves, if you will, for lack of a better expression. Whereas, the shelter has an objective.
Mm-hmm.
And it has an objective and the objective is for the people to graduate from homelessness. And it doesn't mean that the police won't be taking people to the shelter, because they will be taking them to the shelter and so will teams of people be taking people to the shelter. But you still will have people who will not want to go to a shelter. And I think that in order to be Pottinger compliant completely, they have to have someplace that they could conceivably go, but that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I might add to that. So, one of the components of Pottinger is that whatever the alternative shelter is, it cannot have conditions attached to it for being there. So for instance, if there's a requirement of the First Step Shelter that they go through a certain program, that would not be Pottinger compliant. So, you know, the purpose of Pottinger is that it's an alternative without any sort of restrictions or conditions on it. And so you're probably correct in saying some people may want not, may not want to be involved in a specific program and under Pottinger, you couldn't require them to do that.
And even, even as it relates to being searched or being, there's certain things to come to the, to the shelter that have to be done to run a high-functioning shelter, we can't allow people to come into the shelter who have drugs or have weapons in their possession. Whereas, a safe zone, you don't search people in that way. They have certain First Amendment rights and that we're not accountable to, like the First Amendment.
Okay, so I understand and then I concur with Commissioners Traeger and Delgado that perhaps it needs to be near the shelter so that we'll already have that type of drive and they'll understand that that's the direction they'll be going in and take it out of the city.
That's an important part of this, you know, because it is a significant hardship to have that thing located where it is. And, we've had great partnership with Emory Riddle and they've been very tolerant of the shenanigans that have gone on there, but, you know, that isn't going to last forever. You know, the research park is growing, you know, we need a solution sooner rather than later, but certainly, you know, when we, you know, I agree, we need, there needs to be a safe zone and a shelter, but there is no reason why they couldn't be located near one another.
Other than to say that we, we would expect that all cities would have their own safe zone.
Yes, for sure.
Because our safe zone, the shelter is for the elimination of homelessness for those that desire that, but the safe zone is a legal requirement that we should all aspire to as municipalities.
Mr. Mayor, we, the current site is not prepared to be able to use for that purpose. Now, we can get it to the point where it is, but it's not there yet. So, yeah, we'll certainly look at the, how we could use that site and how we could make the improvements so it would work, but I think we've all got, staff-wise, we have to look at what, what the impacts would be.
Mr. Chisholm, would it be possible to get a, an estimate of what it would cost to have a, you know, the minimal, the minimal requirements for what, you know, what our safe zone currently is at a location like one of the, some of the land out by where the First Step Shelter will be versus different areas in the cities? That's something that staff can kind of say, okay, it'll cost us $100,000 to do this versus, you know, 75 for this or 300,000 for this. So I think that would be very important to me. I, you know, I can, you know, I can anticipate that there are people on the commission who would, you know, who, you know, we've already given $400,000, you know, we have commitments. We don't want to, to, you know, spend another $400,000 to, you know, move the safe zone, but, you know, I think we just need to have that information when we assess what these different locations are going to be. And I'd like to hear from, you know, from you all what the estimated costs are going to be and then make sure that it's going to be useful and helpful as well, that there's going to be, you know, transportation to and from and all that, you know, Votran, things like that, concerns we have about the First Step Shelter, we'll be kind of working through those at the same time. So I see that as being a cost savings, but I just would be curious what the staff estimates are to say, provide water and, I don't know, graded land for tents? Is that essentially what?
It's going to have, it's going to have to be, the elevation is going to be raised pretty significantly, so it can work.
And just, I don't know if we have some other potential sites that might qualify that might be of use, I would just want to see a comparison of, you know, what the costs are going to be, you know, and to whatever extent we can cost save by using what's going on at the First Step Shelter. I mean, you know, I imagine if you're renting heavy equipment and moving dirt from one area to another, there's probably some efficiencies there, you know. And, I was also just kind of curious where we are, where we are on the construction, planning and could we get an update? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor, if I ask for an update?
Just verbally.
Not going to hold you to it, just kind of a ballpark update.
What, because I've been quiet about that, trying to get a chart on what, where everything is at construction-wise and they're putting that together for us, but the actual design part of it, it's about 23 to 25% in design. It's not to the point where we have all of the key elements, there'd be no search for construction so that we can go faster. I believe we are... I believe we are working, um, the staff's working diligently with the architect and really other builders in the area to prepare them to participate in, in the construction of the project. So that we are going to be able to escalate the, um, the time and compress the time. And some of what we have to do is look at our own bidding requirements and we may have to compress those, those requirements to be able to expedite the project. But we'll come back, I'll come back with a complete report that tells you
I would appreciate it.
More specifically where we're at with the project.
And one of the things I've seen, I know we had at various points discussed, um, you know, the future of what the First Step Shelter might look like, whether there might be different phases and different, you know, um, I know like Pinellas has different, I don't know if phases is the right term, but different, um, like has degree of facility where someone who shows up very intoxicated might stay in one area and then ultimately move to another area. Um, so, you know, to me, i- it's just something that I, I feel like is all kind of in the same wheelhouse of, you know, if we take the effort to grade some land and provide some amenities, I don't feel that would be wasted effort if, if ultimately, you know, maybe we don't, maybe we end up with another safe zone somewhere else that's better suited, but then First Step could use that for, uh, you know, a intake facility or use it to expand or things like that. So I just feel like, you know, effort and effort spent out there would not be wasted because if we end up not using it in perpetuity, First Step could certainly use it. And I, I think we all know First Step is gonna need far more than they currently have. You know, I think the demand on their services will be greater and if the funds become available, I think they'll probably will expand the scope of services. So that, that's another reason why I think looking at that parcel of land, um, makes a lot of sense to me and it's, and that's why I appreciate your efforts in getting us that information. So thank you very much. Thank you for the update.
Jim, you said the plans are about a quarter done? It's been three months since we approved that contract. I mean, have they given you any idea when they should be finished?
I, I, I'm gonna get that for you. I don't have that right now.